All right, are we ready for the next item, please?
2019 bond.
All right.
And who are you, sir?
So, the next discussion, and this will be a longer discussion, is we've gone through the board gives directive back in November to put together a bond program. And that process has taken about four months to kind of get together the information. And then we had a steering committee, I won't give the initials because no one can remember them anyway, but we had a steering committee to kind of get together and prioritize all the needs based on the infrastructure task force and the board directive, how to put it together, and came up with a bond program. So even though the board's very aware of some of the steps, we're probably going to go into a little more detail, so if someone from the public is understanding where we're coming from, we'll give you a little detail of how we got to where we're at. And I'll let him do some of the talking since I just got down.
Thank you, Mr. Wall and Dr. Michael and Madam President. Yes. My name is Paul Wills. I'm the partner in charge of the K-12 practice within Plant Marine Cresta. And tonight is just for information, so there's no board actions required tonight as we prepare to meet with the Department of Treasury. But we will talk about, you know, kind of the processes, as Mr. Wall mentioned, of where we've really been since January, and then where really where's the board going to be taking action as you look into the future for our potential bond proposal going forward. So on the meeting agenda, we always thought it would be very helpful just to really take a look at what the infrastructure task force came with back in December of 2018. We want to talk about those capital planning efforts and some of those findings. As Mr. Wall mentioned, we've kind of wrapped up the 10-year capital plan, and how does that dovetail into the potential bond application? We do have some initials here. It's the Dearborn Strategic Building and Site Committee.
Oh, you got it all. Anyway, go ahead.
DSBC. And so then, some of the options that we looked at to really align with the educational goals and objectives with the financials, which is a great opportunity for the district, and ultimately how to address your capital and infrastructure. And as I mentioned, the next steps and future dates and times. So I'm not going to read this verbatim, but really there's four focus areas. The first focus was going to be infrastructure, and again, this is from the infrastructure task force's report in December of 18. The second was to take a look at current as well as future capacities. As Mr. Wall mentioned, you've seen some decreases potentially at the elementary, kind of leading into the middle school. The high schools are still over capacity, and we'll talk about some of those things that were considered going forward. Campus safety, security, and then ultimately looking at ways to increase air conditioning throughout the facility. So those are the four focus groups that really kind of driving some of the directions relative to that. So from a capital planning standpoint, again, we've been, I think, every board meeting since January, just providing updates. And I do want to just go on the record and thank Mr. Wall and Mr. Rengos, Mr. Grzinski, Mr. Ball, and Mr. Patterson. In terms of being able to really be available for the Plant Marine Cresta team, we had over 75 meetings, which did include meetings with all the principals, all the building engineers. We had multiple visits to there. And at the end of the day, we wanted to hear what was the educational drive, not just between the capital needs itself going forward. So there's a 275-page document, which Tom said was not allowed to go through this evening. But in your board packet, you should have had the summaries that really address it by scope, by building, by critical need for the next one to six years. What are those things that are in that seven to time frame, and then obviously 10-plus years going forward? Again, we're just really an extension of the existing administration team, which has done a phenomenal job helping us out. Just some of our reporting, so again, not just the spreadsheets, but there's the floor plans, there's a significant amount of pictures. They're all part of the report going forward. Again, just some of the sample deliverables as we go through that going forward. But really what it comes down to is some people often say, well, what does our 10-year-plus capital plan look like? You do have over 3.2 million square feet, and if you were a large corporation, you'd spend obviously capital dollars out of your general funds. We understand, based on Mr. Wall's report, that a lot of school districts in the state don't have that luxury to have a $4 or $5 per foot that they're allocating towards their capital. If you take a look at the next 10-plus years, it's roughly $563 million. The critical steps of one to three, six years is roughly $233 million. I don't know if you recall back from the January board presentation, but we say most districts between that $70 and $90 a foot would consider be critical need over the next one to six years. So you fall within that bandwidth of some of your other peers, such as Utica Community Schools, Grand Rapids Public Schools, and our public schools, as they look at their capital spends going forward. So again, just a real quick reminder, again, this is from the Michigan Combine laws. So bond cannot be used for salaries, repairs, maintenance, textbooks, lease payments, but it can be used for purchasing buses. It can be used for purchasing technology, both non-instructional and instructional going forward. You can also utilize bond proceeds to purchase property, and we'll talk about that as it dovetails. So here's a list of things that are actually on the Department of Treasury's website relative to allowable uses. So previously, we talked about different election dates. So what are those options for the school board? November 5th, which is a general election here in November, based on the committee and the team, it was recommended that this would be considered. And the reason being is it would allow you to actually implement roughly about $10 to $12 million in potential projects next year, roofs, parking lots, maybe some toilet rooms, or maybe some secured vestibules. If you take a look, the rate of inflation or escalation above roughly 4% to 5%, you're about $400,000 to $500,000 of escalation costs if you were to wait that one extra fiscal year. There are election costs. We have approximately $50,000, and that was really related to us from the municipalities. The other date would be the general, or I'm sorry, the primary election, the presidential primary in March 10. As some of those things I stated, again, you would not be able to accomplish a lot of those projects in the summer of 2020, because it takes the time to plan it, implement it, and obviously procure those bids going forward. So how do you pay for this? One of the task force recommendations was keeping the millage rate at the existing mills, so not asking for an increase of what the taxpayers have been paying. If you look back to 1996, the 2002 bond, the 2014 bond, so the district has a history of actually going out for bonds to really take care of its capital. Working with PFM, who's the district's financial advisor, at the existing millage rate for November election, you're looking at a $240 million bond issuance. It would be in two series. So the first series would be issued if passed in November, would be issued in the late, early spring of 2020, which will allow the district to look at some of those projects through the summer. And then ultimately, series two would be in the 2022. What that does is allow the district some flexibility. So some of those projects that may be in series two, you can react to changes of population or changes of enrollment, educational changes. So you've got the early college program, how does it tie into the Henry Ford? So that's one of those decision points that the board can then take a look at at 2022 of do I need to make some changes before I issue that second series going forward? So again, it allows the board to some of that flexibility, but more importantly, gives you $86 million right now to really take a look at roofs, windows, chillers, boilers, and some of those really critical needs for some of your very older buildings going So again, this was the purpose of the advisory committee. Again, I'm not going to repeat the acronyms, but again, it's really to advise the superintendent on critical needs, comprehensive, identified out of the 10-year capital plan, alignment with that financials. So again, working consistently with PFM to look at that $240 million bonding capacity going forward. If there are any committee members here as part of the advisory, just raise your hand. There's roughly 18, about 18 individuals from various representatives. Again, I'm not going to get into the acronyms. But again, a very good cross-section of the district to really allow that educational conversation, the operational conversation, the administrative conversations. We had a series of meetings through April, May, and even into early June to really, again, align with what that task force recommendation was in terms of what should be considered for a bond. We looked at the enrollment trends. So again, the district has some changing enrollments. As Mr. Wall mentioned, there's been a slight decrease predominantly at the elementary and some of its birthright in Wayne County. So if you take a look just at the live births at our presentation and Stanford Middle Cities, it's significantly down for the next five or six years where it was from, let's say, the graduating class of 2019 was born in that 2021 timeframe. At the high school, you're still well above 6,400 students. And again, how do you relieve some of that pressure as part of that bond program going forward? So we looked at phasing. So what projects should go first? Again, taking a look at what are those things that could cost the general fund significant dollars? A boiler goes out, a chiller goes out, a water pipe bursts, things that could actually impact education going forward. We took a look at some of the older, most critical schools as going first in that first series. We also took a look at, does it make sense to renovate three smaller elementary schools and get away mainly from that elementary model more into a larger elementary or K-8? And the committee felt very strongly renovate the neighborhood schools, the little smaller schools, to keep those educational facilities as it is. We took a look at what other options should be in the board based on that enrollment, and I'm sorry, as well as the financial opportunities. One of the things that came out was the discussion of the Henry Ford College. So there's a west facility and a south facility, it's roughly 60,000 square feet. We took a look at that, to potentially relocate adult education from the Michael Berry Center. Again, give you some flexibility of space. It could be for transitional spaces, it could be for CTE programs. We'll talk a little bit about, you know, programs that are, let's say, at all three high schools, and how could you create a unique center-based type program?
Early college programs, too.
And the early college program as well. It is on the campus, which is great, and, you know, I know some of your programs are currently there. So again, creating that space, that would really be an asset to the district long-term to allow you that flexibility of academic planning. We talked, had a significant amount of time with special education. So one of the recommendations is looking at the Nolan and O.L. Smith campus and really creating about 16 classroom addition dedicated to specialized, so that way it'd be integrated into general education from K all the way through eight. That was something that came out of those conversations. By doing that, you also free up additional space over at the Michael Berry Center for potentially some tech lab space. So again, a little bit of moving parts, but again, keeping core to the educational goals and objectives of the district. One of the things we did when we walked through each of the high schools is look at, you know, each high school currently has an automotive lab. Doesn't make sense to have a dedicated program or have automotive program, let's say, at all three high schools. As I mentioned, with that two-series approach, it allows you some time and that flexibility to see what's working for the district. How does the impact of, let's say, the Henry Ford College, south or west facility tie into that tech lab? And how could you backfill some of those spaces if they were relocated? Could you create four to five more classrooms internally within a high school to help relieve some of that enrollment that we talked about going forward? Media centers? We actually had a chance to take the three high school principals and show some of the other principals what other districts are doing for media centers. So 21st sense for media centers are no longer rows and stacks of references. How could you create more interactive spaces, flexibility of furniture? With that, you could actually create one or two additional classrooms out of the media center and still keep core to what the media sources, media resource rooms are used for going forward. The skills classroom, so some of your facilities have three, even four skilled rooms. So again, working with the principals and education, the purpose was to have a maintain a dedicated skills lab. But if there were other skills labs, potentially if based on enrollment, to use that as additional classroom space or flex space to alleviate some of the enrollment. And again, it's not exactly across the board in every single building. And then lastly, music and choir. So currently at the middle school, most of your choir rooms are currently used as large group instructional spaces. They could still be utilized as choir, but as the flexibility of programming changes, again, that's just an additional space that the committee felt strongly about of taking a look to reuse as a general purpose classroom and necessarily a dedicated choir that may be used two hours out of the day going forward. So the last was safety and security. So again, non-negotiable, should be at all facilities. So some offices are actually up in the front, other facilities have it tucked into the center of the building. So we worked with the principals of how to relocate that to the front of the main offices. So as you come in, you do have a secured vestibule, you come in through the door, you get buzzed in, access controls, security camera enhancements. Again, that was something that would be considered at all facilities, and one of the goals is to try to complete that within the first series of projects going forward. Select air conditioning. So every special education lab or space would have a dedicated air conditioning. Then part of the conversation is are there other select general education support spaces, i.e. a gymnasium or maybe an auditorium that could also have additional air conditioning? So that was considered as we looked at the funding sources and the needs going forward. Other recommendations, so we talked at length about maybe an auditorium or a field house. Again, that was something that the committee felt would be a lower priority, not necessarily the four focus points. If that's something the district may consider in future bonds, or maybe a recreational-type millage, that's something that could be considered. And then a parking deck at Fortson, roughly 300 spots. Again, maybe potentially alleviate some of the parking congestion going forward. And then lastly, was just the collaborative furniture. So it doesn't really quite fit the infrastructure piece, but again, knowing some of your furniture is 20, 30-plus years old, and you're spending some operational dollars repairing it, that some allocations for furniture should be dedicated within the bond itself. So from a total bond standpoint, if you recall, there was a $240 million issuance. Now, the good thing is, I'm sure with Tom's expertise and investment of dollars, that you would actually outpace the election costs and issuance costs, which we've shown here of interest earnings. So the real total capital available to the district would be about $241,980,000. Again, trying to address the most critical infrastructure, looking at capacity, safety, security, and that air conditioning component we talked about. So really, there was three options. We actually had five, and it kind of morphed into like, well, what if we took this one over to here and came, moved this one over to this site? So there's three options. The first one we want to call it is high infrastructure focus, low capacity focus. And you'll see that as we walk through the subsequent sheets here. The second one is a mid-infrastructure, mid-capacity. And the last option would be a low infrastructure cost, a higher capacity cost. And then, as mentioned, the safety and security, that's going to be included in all options as well as the limited select area conditioning and focus areas. So again, those are the three options that we'll be talking about here shortly, within the confines of the $241 million going forward. So we talked about the series. So again, that first series is $86 million. Again, some of the items on the left-hand side would be your boilers, pumps, controls. You'll see there the second bullet is toilet rooms. Coincidentally, that was probably the number one or two or third request from every single principal and some of the students to really create better environments. Roofing, exteriors, doors, lights, and finishes going forward. In terms of capacity, again, looking at maybe some equality among the schools. So some of your elementaries only have a gym or cafeteria. Other district facilities have both a gym and a cafeteria, so how does that parlay into that conversation? Again, we talked about the safety, security, and the air conditioning going forward. On the right-hand side, again, you'd look at a Dearborn High School, Edsel Ford, Lowry K-8, Lindberg McDonald, and then the Henry Ford College. Again, allowing the district to really address the older facilities first, taking a look at those critical needs that are within that one to two, two-to-three-year timeframe going forward. And then ultimately, with boilers and chillers, these are those one-off projects that, again, allow the district some flexibility of programming academically, but help address that infrastructure as we go forward. The second series, roughly $154 million. You'll see very similar critical needs on the left-hand side. Again, what you will not see is that toilet room component. Again, our goal would be try to accomplish that in the first three years of the first series. You'll look at the select additions, again, renovations of the media centers and computers rooms going forward. And of course, the remainder of your facilities on the right-hand side would be the majority that works. So the ultimately goal is to show something in every single facility out of the first series. But obviously, there's some academic planning and programming with the facilities on the right-hand side that, again, we want to give the board and the administration some flexibility in time before that second series issuance. Unfortunately, or fortunately, this facility and operations transportation will also be in the second series going forward. So I'm going to walk through the left-hand side of the sheet. So the three columns that you see on the sheet, again, that's your high infrastructure, low capacity. The middle column is that mid-infrastructure, mid-capacity. And the right-hand side would be your low infrastructure and then high capacity addressing. So on the very, very top, you'll see critical. Again, these are your critical needs in that one-to-six-year timeframe. And I'm not going to read a verbatim, but again, similar with site work, finishes, toilet rooms, mechanic, electrical, plumbing. In terms of capacity, so you'll see the, right below that second tier of capacity, you'll see the Henry Ford College purchase and renovation of the $9.2 million. That is consistent across all three options. The committee felt very strongly that is an asset to the district to allow you that flexibility of space, not knowing where immigration is going, where move-in, moves-out are going, what's happening with other things that could impact enrollment, again, giving that flexibility of space. The special education classrooms, as I mentioned, on the Nolan Smith campus, again, that would be across all three of those pillars of going forward. Cafeteria additions, again, this would create the equality at the five elementary schools that currently don't have a cafeteria and a gym separated. And then the next one would be the renovations at the middle school and the high school. So again, looking at your populations, how you handle your lunch flows, again, renovating the queuing and some of the serving lines in conjunction with food services to really enhance that experience for staff and for students. The next one you have, you'll see the classroom additions. It'll be zero underneath the high infrastructure, low capacity, but you'll see on the first, the middle column of roughly $4 million, there's a placeholder really of eight classrooms, again, allowing that flexibility for the district to address the different pockets that through, you know, attempting to try to change boundaries, et cetera, you just can't relieve some of those elementaries that are at or above capacity going forward. On the far right side, you'll see the $12.5 million. Again, this is a much more extensive capacity in terms of not only cafeterias, but also classrooms at roughly seven elementaries and two middle schools going forward. You'll see the Dearborn High School, the six classrooms. Again, if the skilled trades and some of those areas stay within that facility, you might be limited to how you can expand onto that campus. So again, leaving a placeholder for that in the classroom expansions there for, and that's, again, is in the high capacity column. The Fortson Gym High School expansion, so again, that 1.5 million, that is in all three. It's actually infrastructure, a little bit of safety, security, because right now, your existing east lobby is actually undersized based on your occupant load. So you're grandfathered in, which is great. And again, that's one of those things that's going to take some time to plan, go through, you know, design, and get some feedback from historical perspectives going forward. The next one is the Fortson High School parking lot, as I mentioned. Again, that's on the far right column. Again, address a high capacity, lower infrastructure cost. The Edsel Ford, again, from a site perspective, would house the auditorium and the field house, again, on the far right side. And then again, with furniture, you can kind of see a low, mid, and high range. And again, the committee felt that that mid-range would be appropriate, so every school would get some sort of furniture, and it could include cafeteria furniture, it'd be that media center, collaborative furniture we talked about, maybe some of those science labs in our classrooms going forward. So that's the capacity aspect of it. The safety and security, you'll see the $9.2 million, that's consistent across all three. Same thing with the special education, the $2.2 million. Again, that would be across all three. But the one thing that we took a look at was, again, those select gathering spaces we mentioned, so maybe a cafeteria, an auditorium, a gymnasium. You'll see that in that middle infrastructure, because it doesn't really necessarily address capacity, and it's not necessarily a high rate of infrastructure going forward. And then lastly, technology and buses. So there's roughly $2 million of buses, the remainder of that would be used for instructional technology. You've done a great job with your previous bond and some of your other funding mechanisms to enhance your networks and some of your connectivities. So this would be a continuation of those efforts that you've really done a great job over the last four or five years. So again, if you look at the very, very bottom, all three options kind of add up to the $241,980,000. There's a different aspect or focus on each of those three columns. So again, we looked at each of these three approaches as the committee and said, what were those opportunities or challenges? Again, we had six meetings, really through April, May, and into early June. And at the end of the day, the committee really felt pretty strongly about that mid-infrastructure. So again, trying to address as much critical needs in that one-to-six-year timeframe, but also taking a look at some of that mid-range capacity. Again, looking at the Henry Ford College, looking at several classroom spaces as placeholders. Because remember, this is a six-year bond, so we know things are going to change as relates to enrollment, et cetera. And then lastly, it did best align, again, with the task force and those four focus areas going forward. We did have a chance to present this with the administration last week, and they also concur with the committee's recommendation. So this slide, we just updated through today. So again, we're not looking for any action tonight, but we're looking for some good questions and comments as we wrap up the presentation. Again, we kind of wrapped up the 10-year capital plan. We're starting to dovetail into that next step, so again, working with the financial advisors, working with the bond council. On Monday, we will be meeting with the Department of Treasury to look at the preliminary application. So they have a 30-day time cycle to really look at to make sure that it complies with their requirements as well, so it's almost like a two-step process before you have to take official action. And then the last slide is really, again, as I mentioned, that June 17 meeting, that mid-June, again, is to really take a look, and that's kind of why we're here today, is to talk about that PQ application. Now, the day after the board meeting, it'll really be that July 22nd will be the adopted resolution. That's really actually called to put it on the ballot. So again, at the end of the day, that would be, again, that recommended date of that November ballot election going forward from there. So with that, I will turn it back over to the board and for any questions, and I can go back in slides and...
Okay, trustee Moser.
How much, again, for going back to the three different options and then the middle option? Actually, for technology and buses, we have the same number. So how much is it going to technology and how much is it going to buses, do you know?
Right, so there's $2 million that are in the buses, and it's about $15 million for technology. And as I mentioned, the good thing about a bond program versus a sinking fund is you can use both instructional and non-instructional purchases with bond dollars. So if it was a sinking fund, you're only allowed to use educational for students only, not teachers, and again, you cannot do non-educational infrastructure.
And my second question, are there any other districts that are going through the same thing that you mentioned?
Absolutely. So if you look at the elections in May, Wall Lake Schools passed a 300-plus million-dollar bond underneath their current millage rate. Ann Arbor Schools, I think, can raise roughly $530 million underneath the current millage rate. And again, they're looking at that as being true to their taxpayers of keeping that existing millage rate versus an increase. What you're going to see is, as Tom mentioned, the taxable values are going up, and schools are finally catching up from, I'll call the 2008, '09, '10 tax years. So again, your millage rate would stay the same, and you're going to see this next November, March, and May elections, you're going to see a lot of districts out there who are, again, are trying to say, listen, interest rates are relatively low, we're not sure when that next blip in the economy is going to take place, let's get a large capital program infused into our project. Because again, as Mr. Wall mentioned, very limited options of how you handle 3.2 million square feet and some of those capital needs that you're going to need over the next six years.
Thanks. Yes, trustee Thorpe.
I want to thank both of you and everyone that's been part of the committee and the sole process. I spent a fair amount of time this weekend reading over everything that was put together. I feel very comfortable, and it was a very thorough job when you're looking at the different light items or when you're expecting things to be happening. And working in the financial industry, I know right now the interest rates have dropped. There is some belief that they could continue to drop, but you don't know what's going to happen. So moving forward with the bond sooner rather than later could definitely save us some interest.
Trustee Lane.
Yeah, I appreciate Mr. Wall, your backup memo that stated consensuses that were reached by the committee also, and there were significant ones that they all agreed on. I, myself, really appreciated the fact that the committee endorsed the idea, which has been the foundation of all of our educational delivery at the neighborhood level and then increasing in size. So I'm glad that was endorsed, and I was in Grand Rapids this week, and one of my cousins told me about a graduation there of 942 kids or something, or 72. It's just, I really appreciate, and I know for myself, when my husband and I looked at places to move to, we chose Dearborn for the neighborhood schools. So I think that most of us agree with that. But I also want to say that I hope that the whole board will talk to people that we all know, who we consider politically wise on election timing, so...
I have had that conversation, actually, and it was highly recommended that we do the bond this November.
Yeah, I was just going to put my own pitch in right now. I talked to somebody who, I mean, there is a March-scheduled election, but that's a Democratic primary. The schools are unrelated to either political party. So I'd rather, I personally would rather stay away from a primary which would seemingly draw more of one party than another. I'd rather have it be at least facially neutral. I'm worried that in 2020, that just knowing the field so far and the characters involved, I'm just afraid that what primaries or what the election will bring out could be outliers all over the place. So I'd rather have a lower-key election with a lot less hype. I think that if we had it in November, perhaps we could use the good services of Henry Ford College to do a voter registration drive and then tell the, anybody that's registered, and of course, the schools also will need David Boston to get out.
It will be all in the education.
It'll be about getting out who shows up. So November, people expect an election. March will be mu, would be much, much harder to get people out. You never know about the weather in March. So I think that I favor a November election, and I hope that everybody will talk to whatever gurus they know to consider that.
Trustee McCall.
I'm also believe that November would be the best choice for the reasons that you cited, but also it will end up being more cost-efficient after we've went through the numbers. But one thing I just want to keep in mind is that if that's the case, we will be the only thing on the ballot, so we really have to make sure that we inform our... only thing on the ballot, so we really have to make sure that we inform our voters and let our community know, because they've always supported schools. But generally, if it's the only thing on the ballot, you tend to see people that are opposed to it, are the ones that are motivated to get out and vote against something as opposed to those that are really for something. So it's all a matter of, like you said, educating the voters.
The other thing to keep in mind is that in 2020, Wayne Risa will be looking to put forward their millage renewal as well, and it's very tough to compete with having two requests for taxes one way or the other. The other is that November, if we weren't to be successful, we need to have another opportunity to go back to the community again. If we feel that this is vital as we know it is, then we need to revise our message and make another attempt at it in order to, and I would hate to push it from a March to the November of 2020, because that would be a presidential election, it would be a lot tougher to do this both in the March primary and the 2020 presidential election. I know we continue to hear about when you do these off elections, when there's only a single ballot issue, that people think we're trying to kind of sneak in and avoid naysayers for the subject on the ballot, but that isn't the case. We really have to consider our best opportunity since we do believe that this is necessary in order for us to continue to support our public schools here, that we need to continue to finance it, and we just need to be sure that our message remains positive and that we reach out to those members of the community who have always, as you say, supported these bonds. This is not going to be an increase, it will just be a, basically, and I know you hate this word, a continuation of millage that...
I don't hate any word, just choose the right one, that's all.
They are already paying on, but quite frankly, it's going to be put forth to very good use, to buildings that we have so many that are closing in on 100 years. And as you can see for the budget report, we aren't getting any help from anyplace else financially. It's an unfortunate thing that we have to continue to do it this way, but we don't have many other options, and we continue to put forward a good product, I feel, for our students and for the community, and we need to continue to make it valuable. Yes, Trustee Lane.
I would just like to also say my own preference is that, and I appreciate that this city and the taxpayers here have preserved the historic structures that we've inherited, and I think I have a strong preference for maintaining those. We've spent a lot of extra money, for example, at Fortson, we had people tuck pointing, we've had masons there who are really skilled working with slate. It's a particularly difficult structure to keep up, but it's a treasure to the entire community.
And it's not the only one.
And frankly, when I see Cotter on the list of projects, which is, how old is that building?
Fifteen, maybe.
It's not that old, and they don't build them like they used to, so it costs more to maintain those, but the Pantheon is still standing in Rome after 2,000 years. So maintenance, as President Petchlikoff has said, maintenance is worth it over the long haul, so, and the state will not give us the dollars to do that, so we have to raise that within our own if we want to do it.
So number one that I'm going to ask everybody, I have a feeling that we have a consensus here that you would like to go forward with a bond proposal for November of 2019. Everybody feels comfortable with our beginning that process. I'm taking it. Okay, the next thing that I know, Mr. Wall said that he would like to have some idea about when they, because when they take this, they have to have some idea about what they are going to include. Oh, I am comfortable with what was selected as the number-two choice.
The middle.
The middle. The middle of the road, that kind of captures the majority. I know there are some things that some would like to see included, but unfortunately, the dollars only go so far, we can only manage so many things, and I think these hit the main priorities at this point in time. How comfortable are you, or do you have more questions? Because then we will be going to the Thursday, most popular meeting day, being considered of this Thursday, if there are still questions to be had or if people are divided upon what solution you would like to choose.
If the committee is comfortable with it being the middle, I, for myself, there were some projects I would have loved to see get funded, but there's a limited amount of resources, so we just can't do it. I think the mid is a good way to do it.
This is not, I will state that this is not written in stone, this is the proposal going forward to move to the, putting, getting the bond on the ballot, but if, it's going to be flexible enough, if we need to change and flex a little bit, we can. This is a basic outline, I would say, is what we're going to be considering right now. Yes, Trustee MacDowell.
I do have one, I'm comfortable with the priorities being like mid-capital and mid...
Capacity.
I'm sorry, mid-capacity and mid-infrastructure, but my question is, with the trends in our enrollment tending to decrease a bit, and we've had continuous increase for 25-plus years, would you see that continuing, and so then the capacity issue would not be such a problem after this bubble of students graduate from high school? Because what we're looking at now, I'm saying, is less of a capacity issue in the middle and elementary schools. Am I reading those numbers correctly, and what are your thoughts on that?
The nice thing about doing two series is you have that flexibility by 2022 to see where that trend is. If you remember, on the budget presentation, we saw an increase in a curve, but we saw that 20 years ago too, so we don't know if it's going to raise back up or it's going to flatten, so having the second series was the major of the money, we can have some time, a couple of years, to see where that trend is going. And then we can always go back to the Treasury and say, we need to modify it because of this trend, and as long as we have the data to support it, the Treasury will be okay with it. Now, student enrollments, I'll turn that over to Mr. Wells.
So I think it's important, again, if you look at, some CogCotter report come out in January, and just Southeast Michigan as a whole, again, what happens in 2020 with different policies of immigration, et cetera, how does that impact it? And, you know, so if you take a look at the individual line items within each of the scopes, so to give you an idea, educationally, the district's going to preserve a computer lab at each of the schools, let's say at the elementary level. Right now, you might have two or three computer-type labs that, one or two may be converted into, let's say, general education. We talked about the skills labs, again, if there's two or three of them, you might have one definitely dedicated and one or two going forward. Even looking at some of the media centers, how to create, so that's going to be that short-term capacity, and I love what Mr. Wall mentions, like, you do have that second tranche of issuance, which is $158 million, to help plan that. Now, the one given is, at the high school level, you were at 5,500, 5,600 students, now you're at 6,400 students, and we don't see that going away like tomorrow, and so again, that's why I think if you look at the Henry Ford, the early college programs, how do you reallocate some of those specialty programs that are in, let's say, all three high schools? But again, give the district some time to look at it from academic lens before you issue that second series, would be definitely the approach we'd recommend taking.
That makes sense. Trustee Lane.
I'm a pretty middling sort myself, so I appreciate the middling covering herself on both sides, but Mr. Wall just mentioned a word that is music to my ears, which is that we could modify.
Yes.
We'll know a lot more in a little while, as long as we're able to modify and whatever, we can gift down whatever flexibility to future boards and future students, I think is really useful. So when I see like a $9 million parking lot, I'm like, oh, that's a lot of cash on one structure, so I'd like to divide it up, I'd like to keep it as much flexible, carving out what classrooms we need now and trying to preserve flexibility for the future.
So one of the other things you saw in your board packet was the list from the billing principals from 2018 through 2038.
No, I know.
And they were color-coordinated with green, that's definitely the one-to-six-year, the lighter blue was kind of like that, depending if you go option A or option B, you may be able to include some of those things. We want to be true to the principals' meetings with our site visits, so that's why you do see a parking deck, that's why you see an auditorium and a fieldhouse. We thought we wanted to just, again, bring it to the committee, ultimately bring the administration into the board to see that input. So when we have our debrief meetings, after the Department of Treasury approves it, we want to, again, meet with each of the individual principals, review the floor plans, kind of look at the timing, and again, just, they're a huge, be a huge part of the bond in terms of helping us implement it once it passes.
Are there any, Trustee Barry?
This reminds me, when my youngest son was still in middle school, I didn't ask him if he wanted vegetables or not, I asked him if he wanted peas or broccoli. He'd make that face at me and say, okay, I'll take the broccoli. You know what, I'm leaning towards the middle. Like Trustee Thorpe said, I respect all the time the committee put into this decision. And we had the discussion in the committee meeting too, the fact that two, three years down the road, we can make some changes. I feel very comfortable with that.
Okay, is there any other comments? It looks like, yes.
I just want to thank, you know, we started this process in March of 18, when we got done with the nine-month capacity aspect discussions, and we asked for a long term, so we took a good 16, 15 months to kind of develop this program, and I want to thank the Infrastructure Task Force, the community members that came out and started us on the road, all the administrators and engineers, there's a lot of people that submitted information to this plan, so I just want to thank everybody, because it wasn't just the administration put it together, it's been a grassroots to kind of build it up to the final product. Yes.
The best of all minds.
We might sit here and make the final selection, but everybody made their voices heard, and I think that's of great value, has a lot of merit.
I just wanted to mention too, I think, and that's why we're recommending number two, is because of all the work that's been gone, done over the last two years really, and there's been conversations with this information that's been in there, and it really does justice to the Infrastructure Committee that came together last summer, because it really is aligned with their recommendations, and that's why I really like it, because it, and the committee then took those recommendations, came up with a plan that they thought, you know, was supportive of what the Infrastructure Committee put forward, so, and I'm glad that the, at least the parking garage did come up, because that sort of thing didn't come up in the infrastructure, but at least we know now that there's a parking issue, so we'll have to try to look at, but I understand it's a lot of money too. And I appreciate Mr. Wall, you know, Mr. Wells, and, you know, the work that the committee's done, you know, there's been a lot of people, a lot of time, so thank you for your...
Mr. Grzesinski and Mr. Engel spent a lot of time on those.
Absolutely, so, a lot of time.
Appreciate everyone's hard work.
Thank you to the board for...
Well, then, can I assume then that I don't need to call for a motion to meet on Thursday? It sounds like we have come to a consensus about the direction we want to take for tonight and for you to move forward, and are you clear on the directions?
Yes, we are, we very much appreciate it.
Okay, thank you so much, we appreciate all the effort, but I didn't read all the 118 or whatever pages we have.